Quincy City Council President, at-large councillor Nina Liang is joining us for an update on the latest city council meeting and more. Hi Nina.
Hi there.
How's life treating you today?
Everything's splendid. I mean honestly, look, it's absolutely beautiful out, you know, and everyone's healthy and happy right now. So yeah, I can't complain.
Yeah, I think that's everybody's, you know, counting themselves their blessings if they have that to say for sure. The council's still meeting remotely though, right? Is that going to continue?
We are. I mean, as far as I know, just from talking to folks who over the last few months, again, you know, it's really a case by case basis, right? Depending on how things are looking for the numbers in Quincy, you know, we'll make a decision as a body as far as whether or not we're meeting in person or over Zoom. But I think, you know, with three regularly scheduled meetings left, most likely we'll be meeting over Zoom for the remainder of this year at least. But I know we'll certainly be looking at it for the new year to try to get back into chambers. You know, everybody's been phenomenal on Zoom. I've heard horror stories over the last year. It's also side note, I've noticed that I've recently started referring to the last year rather than, you know, when we had first talked about this, it's like, oh, the last month or the last three months. And now I'm saying this past year. So that's a little jarring. But anyways, going back to, you know, this past year, the council has been phenomenal. With, you know, operating and running these meetings over Zoom, it's not easy. There's a lot of information that we go through every single meeting, a lot of stuff to digest and a lot of things to discuss. And, you know, to do it virtually is not ideal, right? Especially when you want to continue to engage with the public and have them involved. But this is the safest way to do it right now. So yeah, we'll probably stay over Zoom for the remainder of the year and, you know, see what happens in the new year.
Yeah, have you found that the the public's adapted to it too? And they've been able to, you know, offer their input on the meetings as well?
From what I've heard, I think so. I mean, we don't know from those who haven't reached out, you know, what their feedback or thoughts are on it. So for those who are tuning in, you know, reach out to us, let us know what we can do to be better and run our meetings better. But, you know, from the folks that I have heard of, I mean, we've certainly had a higher attendance rate, meeting over meeting. And we have more folks, I think, participating as well. So that's really exciting to see. I think, you know, it's different when you, for whatever reason, in the past, just couldn't make it out to Quincy Center and, you know, coming to the council chambers. Maybe that was, you know, a reason why you didn't participate or didn't come to one of the meetings some of those nights. And sometimes I completely understand the meetings run late, you know, and so folks can't stay throughout the entirety of the meeting. But it's, I think, a very different dynamic when you can access the meeting from the comfort and safety of your own home. So that's definitely a plus. And I think it's something we should think about moving forward and how we can continue to, you know, make our meetings more accessible.
Yeah, I know. We've talked about this in the past, is, you know, will some of this remote technology continue post pandemic? And I think you're right. I think it will in a lot of different areas in our lives.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know that you're trying at the start of your council meeting, recognizing some community heroes, and you did that again last night, right?
We did, and we had. Yes, no, it was actually really nice. You know, we talk a lot about our police and fire, of course, you know, and as our first responders. But, you know, Brewster Ambulance does a phenomenal job across the city and they have, you know, for a while now. And, you know, I'm sure people have seen their locations as well across the city. But, you know, more often than not, we don't really always get an opportunity to honor folks like this, right? And so councillor Kroll had wanted to bring them in front of us last night. And so we had the opportunity to talk to Chris from Brewster and just pay our respects and give him thanks. And really everyone at Brewster thanks for all the work that they're doing.
It's great. I've, you know, I deal with folks in public safety every single day. And even they will tell me that they, the ambulance, the EMTs are the unsung heroes. They really are. Many times they're on the scene first. They're dealing with situations that can be quite stressful. And even police and firefighters have a great respect for them. So that's, that's nice.
Absolutely. Yeah. So it was, it was really nice to have them in front of us and to, you know, over the course of, you know, doing this, when councillor Paimonji introduced this effort, you know, where we had the opportunity before each meeting to do this. We've now had the opportunity to honor, you know, all of our first responders. And so it was really nice to have them there last night.
Sure. So what would you say were some of the meat of the matter at the city council meeting last night?
So it was interesting that the agenda itself was short as far as number of items go, but the meeting was pretty extensive. And I think this is because there was a lot of, I guess, like you said, like there's a lot of meat to a lot of the items that were there last night. So after we were able to honor Brewster Ambulance, we went into an order for municipal aggregation. So you and I had spoken about this a little earlier on. This is an effort that we're all behind and we're all supportive of. The councillor Kane had really initiated and has been a champion of. And, you know, part of the process of actually implementing municipal aggregation in a municipality is to have a public hearing for. We've had, you know, our own meetings and our own hearings on the city council, but we do need to make sure that we're having this additional public hearing. So that's going to be scheduled for December 7th, I believe, is the date for the next council meeting. And this motion in front of us last night was just to codify that.
Okay. The way I understand it, and I've asked the mayor about this, is the city would actually buy electricity in bulk from National Grid. But customers would have a choice as to whether or not they wanted a certain percentage of their electricity to come from renewable sources.
That's correct. Yep. And so there's an opt out option. So once, you know, everything goes through, you'll be able to see everything on your bill. Everything is transparent. It's right there in front of you. And depending on the percentage of renewable energy that you're using, based off of the price that you're receiving for it, you as a customer, as an individual, as a homeowner who's paying that, you know, you can always go in and then opt out of it if you want to as well. And there's no penalty for opting out.
Right. Which, you know, has been the sticking point with a lot of these kind of third-party energy providers where there are some kind of hidden fees or penalties, if you will, drawn into it. So that'll be interesting to see. I know other communities are already doing it. So there is precedent for you to see how it's worked.
Yeah. I mean, all around, I think that from what I know and from what I've learned about it over the last year, you know, I think there's great benefit to it, right? The more choices that you have, the better. It creates more competition, you know, so you're not, you know, monopolized by one singular company and the prices that they're giving you. So now as residents, you know, we have options, right? There's more competitive pricing models that can be created by this. And at the end of the day, it's better for the environment. It's renewable energy. And so for those two reasons, I think it's a win, but I'm really interested to see what else we might learn out of the public hearing coming up on December 7th. And hopefully folks will be able to tune in to that as well.
Yep. And encourage folks to watch. Coming up, I'll be speaking with Shelley Dean, the Director of Energy and Sustainability. And she's really kind of the lead on this effort. So we'll get details from her. She knows exactly how it works and how to explain it.
Yeah, she is a powerhouse of information and just, you know, she's phenomenal when it comes to advocacy and work and creativity around how we can continue to be more environmentally friendly as a community and as a city. So that's great that you'll be talking to her. She really is. She's really impressive.
Yeah. Let's talk a little bit about, I'm going to save the matter that's near and dear to your heart for last, because I'd like you to talk extensively about it. But I know the bond council provided an update for you.
Yes. So there were two items back to back. We got an update from the bond council on the rating of the city. So just to be clear, you know, there are two different conversations that were had last night. One was, you know, what is the status of the city's credit rating essentially, right? If you, let's say individually, you want to go out and you want to say, what's my credit score? I want to buy a car. I want to buy a home. That's kind of what we did last night, right? We wanted to see what is the status of the city right now and the state of the city, given how much we have out in debt, how much, you know, we've paid back so far, what are our interest rates looking like? And so that was one part of the conversation. And then the second update immediately following that was, you know, what's the state of the city's finances specifically with respect to the budget and, you know, the impact of COVID-19? So, you know, those are two really, really meaty conversations that we had last night that I think were really informative. And, you know, councillor Mahoney, councillor Phelan, councillor Paimonji and myself are the ones that wanted to see just a quick update, right, on both of these things. And it was really interesting. So we had Cindy come in front of us. She was able to let us know that the city has a double A plus rating, which is phenomenal. Something else that she had talked about as well is that we were able to accelerate some of our debt and then, you know, get our interest rates lowered by that. And we're having, you know, hopefully, you know, success with that for as long as we can until things change. Everything's so, you know, uncertain right now. So this is the time to do it while interest rates are low. Something else she talked about, and, you know, we talk about this every single year when we come to the conversation with the taxes is, you know, for those who follow the conversations during budget season and then during tax season, you know, there is a certain percentage that we can tax up to for each of the homeowners across the city. And we've not had to tax up to that full cap yet. You know, we've been able to tax much less than that. And, you know, the gap, you know, that we're not taxing, you know, bond agencies look at that and say, that's money you're leaving on the table. You know, if you're only taxing here and you can tax anywhere from here to here, you know, if you tax even somewhere in between here, I think about all of that money that you can take to put into your reserves for the city. And more often than not, right, they want cities to build their reserves more and more and more for a rainy day fund, you know, in case something happens, to speak very simply about it. But, you know, we've been, I think, you know, knock on wood, successful not having to tax to the max. And in fact, increasing this even more so that we're taxing, you know, less than we need to, when a lot of cities and towns are actually moving closer to that cap. And so that gives us a lot of flexibility. That wasn't new, you know, when she came and told us that we really should be taxing a little bit higher on that. By no means are any of us interested in increasing taxes. So it's not going to happen. But that was a really interesting conversation and update from her, just to, again, get a full picture and scope on where we are with our bonding. You know, as of right now, you know, we are pretty healthy with what we're doing as far as the bonds coming off of our books and then the new ones that we're taking on. And, you know, it's like anything else, right? If you want to build your credit, you need to actually take out credit and spend, you know, and that's what the city's doing. We're doing so in a healthy way. You know, in a time during a pandemic, we certainly want to be mindful of what that looks like, because we just don't know what's happening in the months or the years to come and what the financial impact of this pandemic is. Even if tomorrow, you know, everything is right as rain and everything goes back to normal, we still have to assess, you know, sort of the damage done, right? And the impact from the previous months or the year that I've been referring to from the pandemic. And that's a little bit of the conversation we have on the second end as well, that we got an update from Eric Mason, is, you know, what has the impact of this pandemic been, right, to the city? And you look at our revenues, I mean, the meals tax is certainly down, right? Not as low as it is across the state, which is interesting, but that could be chalked up to a lot of people still supporting local businesses, which thank you to everyone who's out there supporting local businesses. Continue to do so, please, with, you know, doing takeout and delivery. Our hotel motel tax revenue is obviously significantly, significantly lower than it has been in the past, which is unfortunate. But, you know, other than that, we're doing okay as far as what we needed to collect for our revenues in the city. And so, you know, I know the state is currently in the process of, you know, reviewing their budget as well. And so I'm hopeful that we'll get what it is that we had projected that we would receive from the state. Back earlier in the spring, when we were looking at the 2021 budget, we did actually budget for a much lower amount of funds that we would get from the state. And so we did factor that in and, you know, hopefully we'll still be okay there. But, you know, overall, it was, it was a really informative update. We're coming right into the tax rate being set. So this is the perfect time to have this conversation, you know, for us and for the public to get, you know, again, a solid understanding of where we are with our city's finances and our bond rating and the ability to borrow moving forward. So that was, yeah, again, a really informative update last night.
Yeah, interesting. I've asked the mayor about this. Obviously, he estimates the city totally has lost about $10 million in revenue. He's hoping the goal to keep tax, property taxes level, although he sounded a little more uncertain about that than he was in the springtime, certainly.
Yeah, I think that's concerning for all of us all around, right? I mean, yes, we have to be really mindful of what we're doing with the city's budgets. And we need to make sure that we are also, again, you know, be mindful of what our credit is and keeping that, our credit rating up as well. But it's all cyclical, right? As far as, you know, where all the funding comes from and the work that we need to do, right? It's making sure that we, you know, can sustain and support our taxpayers and the residents that are here, right? It's creating the best services possible for them, but we can only do that if they're able to, you know, afford to pay their taxes so that they can pay into these services. And it's all, again, it all comes full circle. And so getting these kinds of updates, again, is helpful to paint the big picture for us to see what can we do to best support, you know, our residents and all of us, you know, to make sure that we can afford to pay our taxes, can afford to stay here and using those funds to create the best services possible for the residents. You know, hopefully we don't have to raise taxes, but again, you know, we've done a really good job in the last, you know, I don't know how many years exactly, but again, keeping, you know, that tax rate much lower than what it is that we can actually tax folks at. And so, you know, if that's the trajectory that we've been on, let's continue to do that and keep taxes low.
Yeah. Do anticipate that December 7th meeting, setting the tax rate at that meeting?
Yes. That's my understanding of it. I mean, again, you never know what's going to happen, but that's my understanding is that that's what we're planning on doing.
All plans are tentative in 2020, that's for sure.
Yeah, there should be like a disclaimer on every single thing that says anything that's planned, you know, should have a little asterisk that says, you know, it's all tentative.
That's it. TBD, exactly.
TBD, exactly.
Let's talk a little bit about the resolve regarding the compressor station down in North Weymouth, if we could.
Yes, councillor Kroll has been like the number one champion on this for as long as I can remember. I've been on the council, my goodness, five years now. And this is, I mean, councillor Kroll has been fighting this tooth and nail for as long as I can remember. And so, you know, this is something that we were really proud to support for him. And also obviously councillor McCarthy in Ward 1, where this also directly impacts residents over in the Germantown area. And, you know, we were able to get an update from our assistant solicitor, Steve Durkin, about where we are with the lawsuit right now. But we want to make sure that we're standing strong with all of our communities, right? Our neighboring communities to say that we need to continue to fight this. I mean, I just think, I personally think it's absolutely ludicrous if they think that they can build something like this at this magnitude. It's such a heavily, you know, residential area. I just, it doesn't make any sense to any of us, which is why we're trying to continue to fight it. But no, I was really happy he brought this in front of us. I think it gives us a renewed sense of, you know, the fact that the fight continues. And we need to continue to do whatever it is that we can to continue to try to fight this and not have it happen.
Yeah. Did that resolution pass unanimously, Nina? Okay. Now, a resolution ordinance actually proposed by yourself, councillor Debona, councillor Paimonji, regarding a new department of social justice and equity.
Yes, yes. This is something that stemmed from the conversations that we had over the summer, you know, councillor Mahoney, councillor Kroll, councillor Paimonji, myself, you know, in response to the Black Lives Matter movement. But the community conversations, you know, opened up to be so much more than that as well, right? We heard from folks who identified as LGBTQ and queer that came in and gave their stories and experiences. You know, we had folks who just came from all different walks of life, who came to those meetings and shared their stories and their experiences. And a lot of folks came to just listen too, which was really nice. And the priority for the four of us that were hosting it was that it was to listen and to, you know, hear from folks' shared experiences here in the city and their individual experiences here in the city. And that was really telling. I think, you know, it opened certainly all, I think, all of our eyes, mine too. You know, my experiences here in the city is mine alone, you know, and I can't presume to know what every other Asian person goes there, right? And, you know, each person has their own experience. And so, you know, this, this order and this sort of call for a new department was, you know, the result of not just those community meetings, but a number of, you know, one-off conversations that my colleagues have had, you know, with folks who have reached out to us, folks that we've been able to talk to about things that they're seeing across the city. And, you know, by no means, I just want to be clear to you, by no means are we saying that all of the departments across the city need one big department to tell them how to be just and equitable, right? It's not to say that, you know, every single department isn't doing that job, right? That's not what this department is saying at all. But there is a disconnect right now. There's a disconnect between the work that is happening in city government to create, you know, equitable, you know, representation and equitable positions and diversity. And, you know, connecting that work with the residents, right, who want to make sure that that is happening in this city and they want to see that that's happening in the city. And so to be able to create this department, I think, is, you know, even just to have the conversation really, I think, is a step in the right direction insofar as we're acknowledging and recognizing that, you know, diversity here in Quincy is one of our biggest strengths. You know, when you look at, you know, all of the South Shore cities and towns, I mean, yes, we're one of the closest to the city of Boston. It's right there. It's our neighbor. It's our sister, you know, but we have a small town feel, kind of like a South Shore town, right? But we are a really big city and we have incredible diversity here across the city. And it's not diversity that started recently. It's been diverse for decades, you know? And with each, you know, person who calls, you know, Quincy home, they bring their own experiences to the city, but they also have their own experiences growing up here, right? Whether they're good experiences, whether they're bad experiences, they're their own. And we want to make sure that they are heard and that they're recognized and that if there is something that they want to see changed in the city or if there's something that they feel as though is unjust in the city or they want to, you know, find a way to make it better, you know, who are we to say, no, we don't want to make things better, right? And so I'm really excited for this department. It was, you know, it was an ordinance that had a lot of thought behind it and it wasn't something that was put together lightly. And, you know, there was no vote taken on it last night. It was simply introduced. We're going to be putting it into ordinance committee and like every other order, we're going to have a public hearing on it. And I want to make sure we get as many folks there as possible to share their thoughts and, you know, their recommendations, their suggestions on what we can do to make this department the best it can be, you know, putting our best foot forward. And then after we discuss it in committee, it'll be put to a vote and, you know, we'll see what happens from there.
Does the council have the power to create a new city department?
We don't. So everything goes, you know, when departments are funded through the budget, we can't actually add any of that. We can only approve and then cut or, you know, take away. And so similar to this, you know, we can't actually add the new department, but we certainly can put this together and then put it to the mayor. And, you know, if he so willing is going to add the department, then he will.
Okay. And, I mean, for you, Nina, what it, does it mean that you'd like to see more diversity among workers, city staff, municipal workers? Or just kind of a sounding board for the residents to be able to talk about those issues?
Both for me personally, you know, I, I don't think that it's not without trying, that we certainly want to have more diversity across the city, right? And diversity across the city insofar as city departments, you know? And I think it's one of those things where it's, you know, how do we do that, right? How do we, how do we practice things that we hold as values, you know? And I truly believe that folks in the city, we do, we value this diversity. We want to see more diversity in city government. But it's a matter of, you know, how do we do that, right? And so I think this is a great way to create that how so that we can actually implement, again, things that we hold as values, right? I mean, you know, one of the things, for example, that I can point to for this is, you know, the planning department has this initiative. Melissa Pond and I had talked on this and she's been an incredible, incredible advocate working on this effort to create language access, right? And I'm not just saying language access with translation services, but also to make sure to, you know, comply with ADA compliance as well. And so that's an effort that they're putting together to say, you know, what can we do to create a language access program across the whole city, right? And because those are things that they value, they want to make sure that access is a value and that it's important. And they want to demonstrate that and find ways to actually practice what they value. So that's a step that they're taking, right? And this department, again, I think, is a way to make sure that, you know, we have a way to implement things that we hold as values, right? Does that make sense? And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why I'm really excited about this department.
Was there ever consideration of contracting this out, basically having an outside independence firm, if you will, as opposed to, you know, an in-house city department?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's going to be part of the conversation we have, right? Or folks, if they feel as though that is a more viable option and a better option for the city as a whole, then we want to hear it, you know? I mean, we, there's nine of us, you know, by no means do we have every single answer to every single, you know, concern or thing that's out there. But it's our job to listen and it's our job to make sure that we, you know, try to make the best educated decision on something based off of what we're hearing from folks, based off what we're learning and based off what we're reading, you know, and trying to, you know, just again, put our best foot forward, you know? And from what we've seen in talking to folks, you know, this department within the city is, you know, what we're proposing as what we see as a good solution. But we do want to hear from folks, you know, maybe there's something that we are missing, you know? Maybe there's something that can make this department better or maybe there's an alternative, like you said, having, you know, an outside firm rather than something interdepartmental within the city. But that's why we're doing this. That's why we're having this conversation. We want to know, you know, what's the best thing to do to move this forward?
What do you think having this conversation says about the city, you know? How does it, how is it reflected in the community to bring this topic up actually and to make this proposal? How do you think it makes Quincy look?
I mean, I think, again, it's one of those things where we are, this is a show, right? This is a show that we are practicing what we value, you know? I, I think everyone in the city knows, again, how diverse this city is. And we have said time and again that, you know, diversity is one of the city's greatest strengths and we see that. I mean, we see that with, you know, the different celebrations that happen across the city. We see that with just going down the street and, you know, seeing who our neighbors are. And so, you know, to be able to just have the conversation, I think, is a great way to recognize that there is a lot of diversity across the city, diverse experiences, some good, some bad, unfortunately. And this is a way to show that each of those voices and each of those experiences matter, you know? I think one of the things that is really important is that there is no us versus them, you know, notion here. I want to be very clear that, you know, the good experiences are just as valued as the bad experiences, right? Those who come and say, you know, I've had nothing but wonderful experiences here in this city, that's great. And there is value in that person's experience, right? But similarly so, if somebody comes and says, I've had a really bad experience here in this city, their voice matters just as much, right? And again, I think to be able to have that conversation by way of talking about how we can use this department to solve some of those problems is acknowledging that both of those experiences are important and that, you know, one doesn't negate the other, right? And then that's really important to make sure that folks know that. And it's really important for me personally to make sure to stress that point, right? That just because we are taking an opportunity to acknowledge some bad experiences here does not negate the good experiences that other folks have had, right? You and I, Joe, like, I think, you know, we have a lot in common from things that we talked about on and off Zoom before, right? But we also have two very different experiences, you know, in our time in Quincy. And it's not a good thing. It's not a bad thing. They're just, they're just different experiences, right? And one experience is not more important than the other. And so, you know, I, I feel as though, you know, this is a very important topic and it's an important topic to a lot of people. But I also want to call out and just put out there that I do also recognize and respect that, you know, there are some folks who look at this conversation as an us versus them. And I want to be very clear again in saying that that's not what this is by any means, you know? It's respecting each person's, you know, personal experience that they've had here in the city.
Can't say anything more to that, Nina. That's, that about sums it up. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I just, again, want to make sure that folks are tuning in. We have three regularly scheduled council meetings left before the end of this year, which is insane to think about, but that's where we are. And it's going to be November 16th, so next Monday. We don't have the gap week this week because of Thanksgiving. So the next council meeting is going to be on November 16th, where you're going to have an ordinance committee meeting prior to the regular meeting. And that ordinance committee meeting will be getting a presentation on the LDA for downtown. Then we're going to go into the regular council meeting that night. And then on December 7th will be the public hearing for municipal aggregation. So I encourage folks to tune into that and come in and participate if they can. We're also going to have a finance committee meeting that night to discuss the Harriet Hannon Beach Common purchases that will become, you know, public land and public property. I'm sure that'll go through. And then our last meeting of the year is, I want to say December 14th. I will double check that and get that back. I think December 14th before the holidays. So, yeah, no, times, times flying.
It is indeed. Yeah, it's hard to believe, but the closer it gets, the faster it goes, that's for sure.
I know. It's very strange. Oh, I guess one last thing. I don't want to end up sad notes, so I will say this. And while I'm saying it, you could think of something positive to end on. The Christmas celebrations in Quincy.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not doing them this year.
But the mayor did say that all the decorations are going to be put up on the Common and the Wallaston in North Quincy. Plus, the Quincy Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Quincy Winter Market at Kilroy Square outside. So that's that new public space near the new Chestnut Place apartment building and the new parking garage downtown. So there'll be about 45 different vendors there, starting the day after Thanksgiving.
Yeah. I mean, you know what? I think, so thank you. See, positive note, right, to my moping and groaning about, like, I, I, this, we, listen, Quincy during Christmas time is like a Hallmark movie. We just, we do it right, you know, we do celebrations right. And I love every part of it, you know, from Santa jumping out of an airplane to the ice sculptures in the center, you know, and the hot chocolate and the performances and the parade. I mean, it is just one of my favorite, favorite times in the city of Quincy. You know, but to your point, there are other things that are going to happen this year in place of that, right? And I think that's one of the things that I think keeps me going, you know, is, you know, these kinds of efforts across the city, right? All these different organizations, these nonprofits and business owners all coming together to say, we are going to make the best of what we've got and we're going to keep on moving forward, you know? So it'll be different this year for sure. But yeah, yeah, I wanted to make sure to let folks know that that's not happening this year.
Yeah, we actually made that announcement here a few weeks ago. But however, here on QA TV, we will be showing past Christmas parades, so.
Oh, good. Yay.
nostalgic for folks. They should stand up for that, yeah.
The floats are really impressive. People should check it out. It's a really, really nice parade.
Absolutely. Yeah. We'll look forward to make it even sweeter next year.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be good.
Again, to reach out to you, Nina, how do they do that?
Yeah, so they can email, nina@ninaliang.org or niang@quincyamay.gov. They could also call or text at 617-657-9837, or they can find me on Facebook or Twitter at Nina Liang. So, or you don't reach me with you guys. I'm here with you guys every other week now, so.
Yep, absolutely. Happy to do it. Good to see you, Nina.
I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Be well.
You too. You too.